We'll call this meeting the Central Curry School District Board of Directors to order on Wednesday, September 23rd, 6:00 PM at the Bluey Tice School Library. And we will stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of our little brother's hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Suppose anybody has the mission statement handy today? It's all right. Still can't believe I don't have the memories. That's right.
I usually have that, but I apologize.
We'll move on to number two here. No, it's, that's on us. Celebrations and presentations of 2.1, donations from Southwestern Oregon Children's Foundation.
Yes, just in case you, this is the pink, a paper press release provided by the organization. We just, again, publicly wanted to acknowledge their $20,000 donation to the district. And with that, you also notice in the letter from the executive director, Leslie Keating Smith, that there was additional funds available, included in that $20,000 for services at the public library. And Jeremy graciously said that we would find other ways or pass it in kind, so the whole $20,000 is going to student devices, primarily for grades K-5.
Excellent.
And in your packet as well is the press release, as well as the photo with Mr. Tuttle and Jeremy, Leslie, and Mackenzie Lee, who representing our technology committee, wrote the original request to the foundation of what should be done.
Very good. I don't think there's any representatives here tonight, but you can give them our thanks.
We certainly will.
I'm sure I'll run across one of them soon. Okay, 2.2, introduction of new instructional staff.
May you refer to the principals to...
Absolutely.
Well, I'd like to introduce two of my staff who are able to make it tonight. Darby Miller, second grade teacher, and she's been amazing, and David Fonkin, our school counselor, full-time school counselor, so. Mary could make it tonight, our fifth grade teacher, so we'll try to get her to the next meeting. But just one thing, a little tidbit about these guys, the last few summers when I hire people, then I become a realtor. And David's wife already lived here, and Darby had a really good friend that lived here, so once I hired him, hands-free, they got housing. They're younger, well, younger generation, I'll say it, I'm old. Their technological expertise has really helped our staff get through the stumbling blocks of the last few days, and so it's really been awesome to have them on staff. And they're super helpful, they're not just doing their jobs, they're helping other people with their jobs too, so I want to welcome officially to Riley Creek and the Central Curry School District. You guys want to say anything? You're welcome to say anything if you want.
Hi.
Yeah, David's smiling, really. I just can't tell.
I just want to thank everyone for the kind welcome, it's good to be here.
All right, and at the high school, I get to introduce Mr. Bob Cronely. Bob has joined us as our Spanish teacher this year. He came to us from a town that makes Gold Beach look like a thriving metropolis in Idaho, so we are really happy to have him. All of his interview, or, excuse me, not his interviews, his references really emphasize his ability to build relationships with students and the value that he puts on one-on-one time with kids to really help them understand and appreciate Spanish as a language. But again, key more than anything else is the relationships he builds with kids. And he's come into my office a couple of times these last two weeks and got, okay, I know exactly what I do with this kid if he was in my, and I do this with him and they'd be great, and that I'll figure out how to do it online. And he's just stayed committed with it through all the ups and downs and all the challenges, and he's already proven himself to be quite the tech support on our team and otherwise adapting really well to online learning and being a part of our staff.
Welcome everybody, thank you for being here. Number three, agenda changes. I have some... Oh, actually, I do, well, it's only a little bit of two. 2.2, I'm gonna have Gordon give his presentation during the public comment section here, so he can get on. Oh, that will move to 4.1, or four approval of consent agenda. Basically, just the meeting minutes. We all read thoroughly backwards.
I did.
I knew one of us wouldn't. I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Nancy, second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Both? Right, agenda approved. Don't think we have to do the roll call both, do we, anymore?
That's correct, that's up to you, that was specific to virtual.
Okay. All right, citizen input for non-agenda items. Guests must state their name and address for the record, limit to three minutes, and prior to the meeting have completed a comment request card and give to the board secretary. We've got two here, Mr. Bill Williams is on deck first.
Okay, my question is, I've seen a lot of the fogging that's been going on, you know, in using those instead of just sprays, aerosol sprays. I was just wondering if the school is investing in those, or are they on their way, or something of that sort? Because I was watching the bus drivers the other day spray and wipe everything down, it's just, it seems like it's a lot of time, time-consuming, and chances of missing stuff, that's all, that was my only question.
Yeah, that's a, that's a Tim question.
Yeah, yes, we have, we have one in the district right now. Our primary supplier is still backlogged, but we have four available for, we purchased one for each school and one for the bus garage, so we're getting ready to roll those out.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Hi, Mr. Clay, if you want to take the podium, I'll give you the floor here.
Thank you, I appreciate the consideration.
Oprah.
Really windy out there, and I'm from Brookings, so. Haven't learned that yet. For the record, my name is Gordon Clay from Brookings, Oregon. Bullying prevention in schools is a full-time exercise, and because of the pandemic, we don't know the level of bullying or the way schools will be run this year, and will provide a positive or a negative turn in the connection between students and faculty. What I do believe is that social distancing, remote learning, and being forced to remain in a troubled household without little outside support will add to an already troubled situation, and knowing how students are emotionally handling it is more important than ever before. We do believe for true change to take place, the culture of the school must be transformed, and now's the time to do it. It's not as difficult as it sounds. With a year-round bullying prevention program, clear expectations on faculty and staff, and established guidelines for how to treat student incidents equally, students and adults can be part of a culture of positive connection and caring. Suicide-bully connection. There's a lot of concern, even panic, about ongoing problem with bullying and suicide-related behaviors among school-aged youth. Much of the media coverage is focused around blame and criminal justice intervention rather than evidence-based, action-oriented prevention. Increased awareness about what we do know, what we don't know, and what information is most helpful and applicable to prevent, to preventions is crucial to the district's efforts in protecting students from harm. We know that most youth who are not, who are involved in bullying do not engage in suicide-related behavior. We also know that bullying behavior and suicide-related behavior can be closely related. This means youth who report any involvement with bullying behavior are more likely to report high levels of suicide-related behavior. We don't know if bullying directly causes suicide-related behavior. It is correct to say that involvement in bullying, along with other risk factors, increases the chance of a young person will engage in suicide-related behaviors. As school administrators, teachers, and school staff in daily or periodic contact with young people, you are uniquely affected by these events, and I'm sure feel enormous pressures to help prevent them in the future. The good news is, we do have evidence-based, actionable information to help prevent bullying and suicide. As teachers, administrators, and school staff, you have a vital and rewarding role to play. And I've got a list, I'm gonna leave this speech with you, I've got a list of the statistics of what is happening with bullying and suicide. We are, Oregon is way over, and Curry County is way over the national average, like two to three times the national average in bullying, having any harassment of the kids, it's almost 50% I think in Curry County, I don't know what it is for Gold Beach separately. But, and also when we look at the suicidality statistics on the depression question, on have you seriously considered suicide in the last year, and have you actually attempted in the last year? Curry County is above the state average and above the national average. So putting those two things together, we really have to pay attention, particularly with this remote learning situation, that teachers hear what is in the kids' voices, and how they're doing, and what's going on, because they, some of these kids I know from the juvenile department are having more trouble now than they did when they could come to school and be safe. They're having more trouble because they're forced to stay in a household that isn't safe for them. So really, I applaud your efforts, and I'm really happy you're working with Lines for Life and that grant. I have questions about Lines for Life, but we'll talk about that.
Sure.
And thank you very much, because it is good to see you. Been a long time, and you too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clay.
Oh, and I, one real quick thing. The Suicide Awareness and Prevention Council put together a brochure that this is to go out, it relates to the pandemic and what happened during the pandemic, and the dangers, and inside there's some risk factors and warning signs, and what to do if you notice somebody is in trouble, and on the back are a bunch of resources that are gonna come in very handy, particularly when the support for unemployment and the abatement program with housing go off. We're gonna see a lot of families really disrupted with that, and men, because men really up the ante. 75% of suicides are men, and 70% of suicides with boys are boys in youth, and it goes up in the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clay. I'm sorry. That is it for this portion of citizen input. We will move on to district reports. Crystal?
You have your colored reports here in front of you. I'll start by saying at the start of the year, there's usually lots of spending and sort of gearing up, and I will say it has been very different, for lack of a better word, this year, sort of like everything else has been. To the point that we've had a lot more leeway in some of our funding sources and what we have available to us and how we can spend them. When everything, it became clear we were gonna be doing C E L, and pretty much everyone was gonna be at home, we were able to free up some funds, one of our federal grants, to purchase actually school supplies for all the kids, I don't know if you guys saw that, but we were able to do that so that kids could be sent home with supplies, so we can make sure that, you know, when they had their, you know, their coloring project or whatever it was, that they actually had those supplies at home, whereas here when they're in the building, obviously, we have a lot more control over that, you can see that. And so we were able to actually free up for Riley Creek some Title I funds, and so we spent several thousand dollars to make sure that kids have supplies, and then we also did it here at the high school, of course, it's not quite the same, you know, no crayons, that kind of stuff, but we were able to do that this year, which was very different. Your yellow sheet is your, basically your accounts payable list for the, for the year, or, excuse me, for the month of August. Still a lot of sort of one-time charges on here, it looks like, like your annual, things like the Oregon School Wars Association. You're also gonna see things like, on the back of the first page, where we purchased face masks, you're gonna see that they're being charged to that Fund 243, and that's that Esser's brand that was put in the budget this year. It's to cover two main things, to keep one elementary teacher as well, and the remainder of the grant was to go for safety supplies such as face masks, disinfectant, and all of that kind of stuff, so you'll see that throughout the expenditures. Your revenue report, obviously not a whole lot on there right now. If you look at the first page, under the 3101 State School Fund, I'm just gonna go through this too, because I don't know if Jeremy is aware of the payments from our state school fund, but they take our, the state school fund is based on estimates and estimates and estimates with a side of estimates, kind of is how it starts out, basically, and they come up with the dollar amount that they're going to fund, and they divide that by 12 months, and you get two payments in July, and you get one payment August through May, with May being a reconciliation month. So that's why you'll see in the first column here is the budget, that's the amount that we budgeted, the second column range to date, the date range is up at the top right, August 1st to August 31st, so we're looking for one month, and then of course year-to-date, that's the fiscal year, so that's from July 1st through, the end of this date would be August 31st.
Can I ask a question just about how that's, so the budget would have been made in the middle of COVID? So I guess I'm just kind of curious about whether or not you guys have heard how that, is that being adjusted at all, or like?
Certain parts of the budget were, and luckily, other portions that we were really counting on were not. So the state school fund was basically, it was on a $9 billion biennium, and they are going to maintain that.
Okay.
And so, so we're pretty confident in those numbers. Some of the other grants, we were really concerned about Measure 98, but that is also coming in at full funding right now. What we're not going to see was the student investment account, and if you guys remember, that was the one everyone voted on, and it was supposed to, you know, bring in about $2 billion, I think, per biennium to school districts, and that's the one that took the huge cut.
Okay.
The one thing that we had in there that we felt was absolutely crucial was the full-time Riley Creek counselor, and we are going to have enough funding to keep that counseling position in there. So some of the other things that we had in there will probably be pushed, but we did get information today that it's looking pretty good in the next biennium, they were expecting, I think, 2.2 billion to go into next biennium for that, for that, those accounts.
See, remember the SIA was around 440,000, and I believe we got about 25 to 30%, about 140 this year?
Yeah.
But the projections early that it'll be fully funded as next year, as well as Measure 98 being fully funded.
And remind me, are we halfway through the current biennium?
We are.
Okay, yeah, so we got one year...
So 21, 23 is now what we're looking at.
The funding forecast came out today, and it was not nearly as dire as it was last June, but it is not yet up to pre-COVID numbers. So it is more, it's looking better than it was before, but not as good as...
Even 50% would be...
Yes, yeah. And on that note, I believe they voted on the first rates today too, and as of right now, I believe they're coming down.
Wow.
So, yeah. So let's see, your, blue one is your expenditures, so your expenditures are gonna be everything, payroll, accounts payable, everything, and then this report is broken down by function level, so you can see everything coming out of, for example, the very first one is elementary instruction. So that would be anything we're paying for elementary instruction, as well as any supplies, for description there. And then you have the cash sheet, and man, that's getting tiny, not the, not the number, sorry, the font. We're actually in a good position with our cash right now. We had a lot of things that actually contributed to that last year, obviously, there was a whole lot of months we didn't have substitute costs, we weren't buying a whole lot of supplies at the end of the year, we really stopped spending because we didn't know how things were going to turn out, how it was gonna look. The child nutrition program brought in a lot of funds right at the end of the year because we were delivering so many meals to homes, so it was really a combination of decreased expenditures and then some higher-than-expected revenues. So cash right now is in a good place. And with that, actually, are there any questions about the reports? I just wanted to give you an update on child nutrition. Up until a few weeks ago, we were ready to roll back out the National School Lunch Program, the School Breakfast Program, which is what you would normally see when you send your kids to school, it has a whole, it's a federal program with a whole set of rules, and although they didn't have quite all the information out that we wanted, because we were gonna add in that new program that was going to allow a lot of our parents to have zero-cost meals, up to like 300% of the poverty level, and then in a matter of second steps, which and the federal government allowed us to continue running the summer food service program, which is a different federal program under a completely different set of rules. So I'm sure you've seen that we are back to delivering meals to homes, and anyone that lives in Central Curry's boundaries and has a child between the ages of one and 18, they can fill out a form and we will deliver meals. We're delivering right now on Monday and Wednesday mornings. Monday, we're delivering two breakfasts, two lunches, and Wednesday, we're delivering three breakfasts and three lunches. So we're back to running that program again.
And we're up around four...
We're getting, we're getting up to towards 400, yeah, 400 meals, or 400 kids.
In addition on, from a financial standpoint, we, a lot of the traditional student fees, you notice, we haven't brought them to the board for consideration, and after consultation with many of the other districts on the south coast, we're recommending that we not collect student fees this year, and what I'm talking about in that, that's the $10 ASB, kind of a fundraiser for student council type thing. Sports fees, we're gonna suspend with the idea that, one, we can't guarantee that sports seasons will occur, and if they do, they're gonna be abbreviated, and in that spirit of all the other economic hardships that the pandemic has made on families, we feel this is a prudent time to withhold, or suspend those fees and make adjustments in the budget general fund as necessary. That sounds our ideal.
Absolutely. All right, thank you, Crystal. Any questions? 6.2 principal reports, Mr. Denning?
I'm in the back here. Actually... I just thought I might... This is something we're gonna actually have to think about when we get the kids back in the building. So no offense to work. This is dangerous, give me a pony. My dad and my grandfather were ministers, and my brother-in-law, father-in-law are ministers too, so. Mine is a Bible, it's living in town. You got my report for the weekend, but I kind of did a supplement to it because some things needed to be updated since then too. Last Monday, the first day of online learning, we had 352 student sessions out of a possible 408, and the reason that's kind of inflated because the middle school on Monday had four, each teacher had four sessions unless they had a prep, so the numbers are a little bit skewed that way for an 86% success rate, and then we ran the numbers again yesterday, and you can see we bumped it up a little bit, 379 to 421 for 90% success rate, and then I, I did the other numbers, I ran K-5, 90%, and 68, 90%, so it evened out for both grades. I think one reason for the improvement is we had a couple of parents out of town, they came in, and then we were able to get more devices out. So if you look at the next, if you talk to Dan Springer, he's been working night and day to get us more devices. Last week, we had 105 loaners out, we're up to 130 loaners out, and 20 are in my office waiting for pickup as of today. We, basically, the teachers that got any laptops turned in their old ones, so Dan did a bunch of things to them, deep breathe, put a filter on them, and cleaned them up a little bit, and then we're getting them out to the families, and then, once we were done with that, we started emptying our computer lab. We have, they're called all-in-ones, it's like a fat monitor that has the computer and everything inside the monitor, there's a keyboard and a mouse attached, and so that's what we're giving out to the parents now. We've emptied the 3.5 computer lab, Dan just finished up with a couple more laptops today, and then he's gonna tomorrow enter the other computer lab. Knowing that we got a bid for some surface goes, and we're planning, when we're back in the building, that possibly we'll use, we'll get the surface goes into the labs, because just like Brookings, when we get back in the, in the school, we can't have everybody bring their devices back, because a few days later, a couple weeks later, we could have to do it all over again. So our plan is, right now, and it's not finalized yet, but the plan tentatively is to have everybody keep their devices all year long, and most of the devices are not, except for the surface goes, are not brand-new, top-of-line anyway, so that'll be okay. Hopefully, when we get back in the building and get through the year, we'll become one of those one-to-one schools that we've always been jealous of, so every child will have a device, which would be pretty outstanding too. Still need about 30 devices, and like I said, Dan's going into the other lab, and we should be okay. The next issue is several families still got internet access. I know Tim's been working on it a lot, but, you know, we're still getting calls, and parents are frustrated because they used all their data in one day trying to stream something, so we're working on that part of it, and that's probably been the most difficult thing, I don't know, Josh probably shares the same, saying, we're supposed to be the guys with answers, and when people call us, and it's been really frustrating to say we don't know when a device is gonna be available, we don't know when we can get the internet, please hang in there, please be patient, and they're frustrated, you know, they're trying to be teachers at home with not, with not a lot of internet access, or the ability to sit down with their child all day long and go through the classes with them, and some of them are coming home from work, you know, quick supper, and then trying to cram a day of learning into just a couple hours. There's a lot of frustrations out there, and we're getting a lot of phone calls that the counselor and I and our office staff have been handling, and it's, it's getting better, it's getting better, but we still have a ways to go with that too. Let's see, what was amazing, if you look at the totals section there, on the new one, not the old one, we, when, when we did the surveys over the summer, a lot of families said yea or nay whether they needed, would probably need a device or not, and I think Tim was, we were looking at 15, maybe 20% at the max, and, and it turned out to be almost 60% of our kids are asking for a device. Some probably didn't absolutely need one, but they found out, oh, the school's giving out laptops, so, so I'm sure there's people that have ones that don't need them, but I think one of the things was, a lot of people assume that they have, a lot of kids have laptop, or tablets, and so a lot of parents figure, oh, we'll just use a tablet, well then, it turns out tablets don't work because you have to have a keyboard of some kind, so that was probably why we had such a big jump in people needing devices. The next thing, one's here tonight, Tina, my amazing office staff, I cannot tell you what it's been like for the last month. They're there till sometimes 6:37 or later at night on the weekends, and they're taking, they're the front phone call, their very first phone call. And they're having to try to provide tech support, food support, classroom support, anything you can imagine, they are the answering people. They've done it all with, you know, mostly smiles. There was a couple swear words, I think, but.
That was her, not me.
I can't tell if she's smiling or not. But they, trust me, they are the PR people for our entire community, and they have a lot of influence, and their positive attitude, despite maybe when they hang up the phone, they scream a little bit, but it's still, they are amazing. And hopefully, we can figure something out because it's been a solid month and a half of them working much, much more than eight hours a day to get everything going. And especially with this COVID issue, they're getting calls now for tech support, and we don't have, we don't know what to do. You know, my answer is reboot, you know, turn off your computer and turn it on, probably and see what happens. But that's the kind of player. But anyway, they are amazing, and if you see them around or get a chance, just thank them because they've been over backwards for everybody to get them what they need to succeed at school. So thanks, Tina, officially, and I'll pass it on to Catherine tomorrow. Ongoing professional development, Michelle Pierce at high school here and Corinne both came over with my staff for a while because it's been a huge learning curve, especially for my self-contained K5 teachers. I think it's kind of, if you've worked with both grade levels, it's kind of a different dynamic. The older students are much more able to deal with devices and technology and things. Where the younger kids, you know, we just have, they just want to go to recess, you know? So it's been really difficult for my K5 teachers to kind of retool and relearn. So Michelle and Corinne came over and did some trainings with our staff, and that was super, super helpful. So thank you, Josh, for letting them come over. It was great, and we'll hope, we're going to, they offered to do more, and we need more too, because we had to learn a whole new platform of Microsoft Teams. And so that's a whole piece there that is a big piece. There's so many bells and whistles, it's sometimes hard to keep track of everything. And then the whole other piece was the Edgenuity curriculum program that we bought, the online learning. And so that's been two gigantic things that would take probably several months for people to really master. And so the ongoing training on Fridays is going to be a lifesaver as we move forward into this COVID situation. David Monken, you know, I talked about David a little bit. He came from a school district that already used Edgenuity, and that has really been a lifesaver for our parents and for our staff and for me, to have somebody that knows the program already and has the answers for people. So that's been really nice, and David's amazing. Immediate goals, ensure every student that needs a device gets a device. We're real close to that. Hopefully, by next, I'm projecting, I don't want to put any pressure on Dan, but I'm thinking by next Tuesday, any that are still left, we're going to get a bus and probably go out and deliver the ones that are left. And we should have everybody that wants, that, I shouldn't say that, everybody that needs one gets one. And then what we'll do is, if there's any extra, the families that want one, that don't necessarily need one, will get one. The Hive students, the kids are at the library, we kind of put them back on the list a little bit just because we had families that had nothing. And the kids that are in Hive, there's some computers there. So we haven't forgotten, Jeremy, we're going to, we're getting to them eventually. But they've got teachers helping them, and they're on computers, most of them are on computers, and so they're kind of ahead of the game for most of the kids at the Hive program. And that's an amazing program. If you get a chance to, if you're even allowed to visit, I think you can, but definitely go by there and check it out. It's pretty amazing. Laura, I know works there too. Good, I'm talking a lot. We started, oh, keep staff and students stable is another goal. Get students back in the building is my main goal. Every, when I wake up in the middle of the night, it's how can we get them back in the building? We started with a small number of special education students in cohorts of 10, and it's been really, really nice to have kids, it's been since March, you know, to have kids in the building, to hear laughter. We had a kindergartner come, and she was crying. And, you know, I was sad that she was crying, but I was happy that I had something to do that dealt with a kid and on a computer. We had to coax her off the bus and down the hallway, and I made a balloon out of a hand, a glove, so that was kind of fun. And then problems, you know, I talked a little bit about the problems that we're still working on, devices, internet connectivity. One thing that we did not foresee was the printing for digital education. And you guys that are parents, we, I think, we, at least I thought that Edgenuity was, oh, it's all online. And I think there are probably ways to do that, but there are some shortcuts that parents need to have because they don't know all the bells and whistles. And so they're trying to print or take pictures of it and print, and it's just been, it's been a big problem. So the teachers kind of started this week, we're actually printing up some paperwork that's needed at home to relieve the parents of that responsibility because that's probably one of the biggest phone calls I've gotten in the last few days, is people that are frustrated because this was supposed to be online, and it's, we're having to print stuff, and we have no ink, or we don't even have a printer. And so that's been an issue, and that's what we're working on right now, is to get the kids the paperwork too. And then tech support for our families, and I, Tim and I were talking the other day. If you go on Brookings website, one of the big windows that opens up on their website is tech problems for families or something like that, and there's a phone number. And we don't have that. We, you know, Dan's working for us, he's a tech guy, and we have a couple of teachers that have been helping out when they have a chance, but we really don't have anybody, you know, Tina and Catherine and I were talking today, we're trying to solve problems that we have no clue what to do with. And so that's an issue. If we, as we keep moving forward, what, you know, a parent calls and says, my webcam is not working, either on their own device or on a school device, and who helps with that? My computer crashed. And so far, we've had a couple crashes, and we've been able to, they bring it by and we swap them out with one that we know works, but then, and then Dan can actually try to work on that one, but that's something that we really need to look at as a district. As we continue probably, at least for another month, into online learning, that we need some kind of tech support for families. And we can't keep asking teachers to do it because they have other things to do too. Talked a lot more than I meant to. Questions?
Like a lot.
Yeah, there really is. You know, professionally, it's probably, you know, I think, you know, after doing this for 30-some years, you know, all I got is nailed, you know, and then everything twisted, and now I don't have a nail. And it's kind of the dynamics of school. Usually, you have your new teachers asking the teachers that have been around for 20, 25 years, hey, what do I do, you know, how do I deal with this? And it's a total role reversal. Darby and David are our new staff, and Darby's a first-year teacher, and she is helping teachers that have been teaching for 20 years with stuff. So it's kind of interesting how the dynamic works, and that's why Riley Creek is doing as good as we are, is because of the teamwork of the staff. They're all working together and they have, well, it's not my problem, but they're actually jumping and helping everybody, so. Jeremy?
Question. I, the numbers are confusing to me, and I want to try to make sure I understand this. So as far as devices that are needed, your report says that there are 30. You still have about 30 students out there approximately that need devices, is that correct? Or is that the number of devices the district needs?
No. Once that, yeah, that's, I'm sorry, that was confusing. That was, I tried to do the report on Friday, and I tried to update and didn't update everything. We have about, Dan and I went in there yesterday, and we have, I think, 32 all-in-ones in the lab in the library, and so that will cover that. That will cover that need. So once Dan is all the way done.
So those need to be configured and set up to be distributed?
Yes, yeah.
And so just for clarification, once those go out, there will be a hole in the lab?
Both labs will be empty.
And those, and then the stuff that's coming in from the grants?
Yes.
The other grant will fill that hole, is that correct?
And that was my plan, and I guess I'll talk a little bit more just because there's so much new stuff. When I went to Hive to visit, outstanding program, but it was a clear difference between the kids that were on SurfaceOs, hunched over like this, and the kids that had a monitor. And I think that's something that we really need to look at. If we decide, maybe we need to buy some monitors that they can plug into or something because, you know, my eyes are shot. Young kids, I, you know, I just think it's really, and also for posture-wise too. And it also, it's like having a big TV at home. I think you focus more on what's on the screen, and if there's a little screen, you're going to be distracted by other things too. And I think some parents are finding that out too.
And this is just, it's not so much a question as a comment, which is that with Hive, I think there's approximately 20 of the devices there that are not district devices and not parent devices. And I just want to throw this out there, that there probably should be a contingency plan in the case that Hive has to shut down for health reasons. Because if that happens, those kids are going to be back at home without a device. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Jeremy. Now I'm going to sleep tonight.
Say amen.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's why we're hoping we can get the bids, the bid out and get those laptop, the SurfaceOs in. And that's kind of right now, and we've got probably, I'd say seven or eight maybe laptops that are, Dan didn't want to put out because they're just, they're missing a key here or the mouse doesn't work very good. So those are kind of like our emergency, emergency, emergency backups too for that. But yeah, and that's, yeah.
They've already been ordered.
Yeah, okay. And we do, to throw that in there too, we do have a couple of families, we had to tweak our schedule because we were asking families to share. So like if they had a first grader and a fourth grader, they could share the same device. So we've had to adjust our digital learning, our streaming learning, to times so parents could use one device. So we do have a few parents that we're going to try to get out devices so we can share, and then we can look at expanding our digital learning too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Denning.
Thank you.
Mr. Metzger?
This was actually Tom's first report.
Yeah. Oh. I didn't know Tim was going to send that out, so he got, that was a good one.
That's okay, it's probably more polite than mine would have been. Although actually, I have to admit, the principal's report this weekend, I got it done on Sunday, that's because I was troubleshooting email all weekend. I've been getting emails from students at 7:00, 8:00, 9:00, 10:00 o'clock at night, ah, I'm stuck, I can't, so. I tend to be a little overindulgent, so it's like, okay, fine, let's get you through it and figure that out because then hopefully we can get to a schedule where we're back to a normal timetable if kids are queuing stuff during school hours. So, to echo what Tom started with, this is a bizarre way to start a school year. 16 years ago, I finished my teaching degree. My master's thesis was based on using technology in the classroom to invert the student-teacher relationship. So the teacher teaches something, they go home, they learn something, they come back, and they actually teach it to the class. That is now entirely out of date, and it's now even further out of date because what I was proposing at the time, which was like, wow, that's really different, is now considered a common practice in the classroom. In fact, now it's kind of considered passe. So online classes, yeah, Microsoft Teams has been a learning curve for our staff and our students. However, we can now say that all, every single one of our students is on a comprehensive distance learning, I keep saying CDO, but it still sticks with me that it's not what it means. Our comprehensive distance learning plan has checked in on Microsoft Teams, has successfully connected to classes, and has been to an attended class. Our regular attendance is still somewhere around, we've been hovering around the same numbers that Tom has, about 90%. We handed out, 52 laptops handed, which was primarily our SurfacePros, however, we have handed out four of our Chromebooks as well. We were a little hesitant to hand those out just because the Chromebooks don't play quite as nicely with Microsoft, but at the end of the day, if a kid needs a device, a kid needs a device. We have seen, I don't know if Tom's seen the same thing, a discrepancy in the participation versus the homework turn-in rate. So this is one of the challenges that our teachers are dealing with really heavily this week. The high school kids are really thrilled to be back online. They're thrilled to see their teachers and their classmates, they're really happy to be back, and then class is over. And they forget there's anything else on Microsoft Teams that they're supposed to be doing. So this is one of the challenges that we still have and one of the adaptations to the digital learning environment. Kids are really great at being accountable. When there's a teacher, they're looking at them. However, when that TV screen switches off, they go, oh, no one's watching anymore, I can do whatever I want. So this is going to be a big turning point for us as we talk about how to motivate students and teach a culture of self-motivation around homework rather than accountability to an adult. Adjusting to new roles, teachers are adapting to online facilitation roles. Sometimes, you know, it's been interesting, I got to see actually one of my children's classes one time, and, you know, it's fun to watch second graders online. They are just desperately looking for the teacher's attention, they're showing everything in the house, they're dancing on camera, they're doing all this stuff. When you ask a question to a group of high school students on camera, it's like screaming into the abyss. So what does anybody think of that? I actually had one time that I sat in a class, I held really still, and all of a sudden, kids started going, I think Metzger disconnected. And that was the moment I said, now you know how it feels, answer a question when your teacher asks it, please. But everybody's really adapting to this. I haven't had as many teachers coming in tiers in my office. They're really getting the hang of it, and the reaction that they're all having is, I feel like I'm doing my job again. I'm teaching, I'm actually talking to kids, life is starting to feel normal again. We are starting limited in-person instruction again. That has actually been one of the biggest morale shots in the arm for us. So we had a couple of special education students coming in this, starting this week. Tomorrow, we bring in our first round of kids for SHOT classes because OD does allow for limited in-person instruction for classes that cannot be replicated online. Woodshuck, you can do safety for a long time, but at some point, you can't do the work that has to be done. So we're going to bring in our first cohort of 10. We also have had kids coming in for an athletic support period, which was traditionally what we have called zero period. So we have had a small cohort of, again, about 10 kids coming in, doing some time with Mr. Swift and Mr. Clark, just getting active, getting healthy again, and thinking about those things. Couple of project updates just because I always keep them on there. Maintenance, flooring and the music room's been completed, so when we return to instruction, the music room looks really great. Right now, it's empty, but it'll get there. And the continued expansion of our online platform. Microsoft Teams and OneNote have been a tremendous challenge to learn. So Mrs. McGinnis has some time in her schedule to do what I am calling administrative support as she continues to try to expand her role in that. Her main goal right at the moment has been helping to troubleshoot teacher and user issues and developing PD around that and additional supports for staff as they try to do this new digital instruction. Because most of my day, well, it consists of hello, yes, have you tried turning it off and turning it back on? I am fielding on average about 20 IT calls a day at least, not including emails, can you unlock this for me in Edgenuity, can you do this, this kid's not showing up at my team, stuff like that. Goals, the ones I kind of identified right at the moment, social and emotional health, so distance learning is a challenge for both teachers and students. We are really worried about our kids, honestly. We don't know what's going on out there with them, and I have a staff and myself that tend to be involved. We know what's going on with our kids' lives, we do things outside of the norm to try to support them in school, and we don't know what's going on because we only see them for two hours on the little video screen, we worry. So we're actually trying to find ways to continue to support our students and staff emotionally. So it's, we're working on plans to continue connection with students. We have a couple of things going on as far as, like Mrs. McGinnis has taken over for student council, and Ms. Pepin has taken over as our new cheer instructor. I'm already working with them to do a digital pep assembly. Why? Because it starts to feel normal again. And really, it's about making high school still fun, not just that you log into once in a while. Right now, one of the things I'm actually really working on is looking for teacher morale boosters because teachers come in, they're happy to be here, they do their job every day, but at the end of every day, they walk out looking exhausted. So anything that we can do to just give teachers a shot in the arm, that's what I'm kind of looking for right at the moment. I briefly mentioned the new roles. So Mrs. McGinnis is going to be our student council advisor this year. Ms. Pepin is now going to be our cheer advisor. Chris Higgins took over for football for us, and then Chris Clark has taken on a new project through the ESD as our student support specialist. So that we have trained a certified staff member of both the high school and Riley Creek to really be focusing in on social emotional health and checking in with students. So that is his new role here, and one that he's taken too, like a fish to water, quite frankly. He really loves doing that. He's calling kids, he's finding out what they need. He comes to me and says, okay, look, can I get 50 bucks to do this, that, or the other thing? Well, yeah, we can figure that out. And it's really just about getting kids feeling connected again. And then communication and accountability, one of the things I am trying to do is increase our digital outreach via the website, social media. I'm going to be doing a weekly, well, a little, I guess, overly lofty to name it this, but it's the history teacher in me. Roosevelt did fireside chats, which was the idea that every week he got on the radio Roosevelt did fireside chats, which was the idea that every week he got on the radio and he talked to people about what was going on in the country. I have a webcam setup in my, my office, that will be my weekly, we turn, we talk about what's going on at G B H S. I have to come up with a better name for it than that, I just, I can't live up to that. The first one will come up, the first one, I did a real brief thing, the first day of instruction, the next one will come out this Friday. And then, current C D L enrollment, this number is actually still down, we added two more, so it's now at 121, and our online only is actually at 21 now. Our attendance data, I shared a little bit of it, but I didn't, I wasn't able to pull exact attendance data because of the number of class switchings and changes, and then students moving from online only to in-person, so I'll have that for next time. And then athletics, because I always include that at the high school level, they'll happen at some point. We do have our athletic conditioning club focusing on maintaining health, social activity and safety. The conditioning club meets in limited numbers on campus, pods of 10, twice per... And they're up! All right then. Good timing, because I'm done. Are there any questions for the board?
That was an alarm.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Josh.
Really?
Okay, superintendent.
I'm in the green sheet there, so again, my high sense of appreciation for Tina, who every day sends me an update of the numbers across the district, been doing that since the middle of August, and so this is live as of, these numbers are as of Friday, but we continue to change. But essentially, you'll see that across the district, we have 343 in our onsite, if you will, or currently in C D L, and then 99 in the online option for the year. And some of our planning, we anticipate as, and we've already seen it in the first week, of people making adjustments in both directions, but more of people leaving the all-online, returning to the C D L. So in our planning, we've kind of anticipated about half of that 99 column will be around 50 to 60 by the time the next, could be totally wrong, but that's kind of our prediction by the first of November. As a district, we, I believe, ended the year about 475, 480 in June. So you can see right now, we're at 442, so we're down about 30 students. If you look to the next two columns, we've had 24 students register through the E S D and are doing homeschooling, and then we have a, the 13 enrolled in charter schools are new enrollees to charter schools this year. Prior to this year, we already had about 15, that I had been going to charter schools their whole careers, and I didn't even know that until we started finding out how many we were actually having go out.
So that would be a total of approximately 28?
About 37, yeah, 37-ish. So that's essentially, the, the move ends and the move outs have kind of equaled as far as families leaving the community and those coming in. But, so, in conversation with Jeremy earlier in the week, and this may come up a little later in the meeting, that idea is what strategies do we put in place to recover potentially the students in that 37? And maybe it's COVID-related, there are a lot of reasons why people choose to homeschool or choose to try the other virtual charter school. My gut tells me many of them was COVID-related to make the decisions for, for them as families. So, but those are kind of the raw numbers that we're working with. So when you put 30, a difference of 30-ish students to a state school fund, you're talking to a quarter of a million dollars. And that, that's an impact that we certainly need to, to address. So I'll let that be a pregnant pause for a little bit. The rest of my report, that we've covered the professional development already, since our last meeting in August, we did receive the resignation of Deborah Watson, who was a fifth grade teacher at Riley Creek. Based on her enrollment numbers, we did not add back that staff member. Mary Lee and Gretchen Anthony were two of our four mentor coaches, and they essentially stepped down for a while because they just really felt that their expertise was not in technology teaching, and felt it was best for us to use our funding in a different way. Connie Keel is our new gear-up coordinator, and then we have an agenda item with that last one there on the agenda. If you haven't been over to the bus bar, we have a brand-new fence that's circuit, has been, been done. And then the other, Crystal referred to some of our, our other funding sources that have allowed us to buy some technology. And all students belong, that was a new initiative that just came out last Thursday morning with the state board. We're going to be seeing much more action around that, and I anticipate at the October meeting, I'll have a new policy for you to consider. And it's around the temporary rules that are currently in effect related to the use of hate symbols, specifically the new swastika and Confederate flag at school or school events. It's all around the topic of discrimination and bias issues in our communities, in our schools, and so I'll be bringing more information as that comes forward. I did want to say a special thanks again to the Curry Public Library, the Friends of the Curry Library, the Rotary Club of Gold Beach, and potentially other donors. Ford Family Foundation has shown some interest in being the financial support for Hive. We have 46 students who are currently working there four days a week. Carly Wright and her staff have done a, have really quickly established those relationships, and Ms. Williams being on the staff as well. And I was trying to be clever, trying to make translucent tones, but I don't know. Anyway, it's, if you haven't been over to visit, please, please do. And then finally, I also wanted to share thanks to the Sequel Water District. Mr. King is here tonight in another capacity, but he leads the charge in that area, and they have remodeled a double Y mobile donated by the fire department and have converted it into an office space, but also will hold up to 15 students to come in. There was new furniture and a high-speed internet available to our families, and so I wanted to reach out. That program, our initiative of having C D L was a, was a big influence on the Water District in making that purchase in those accommodations, so appreciate their, their support.
And do they have 15 kids in there?
We haven't yet. We are, we are focusing on those families, again, who don't have internet access, and in the, in the Cedar Valley, the Seca, Ofer area, we think we've identified between three and five families that are considering that. So three and five families could easily end up being 12, 15 kids spread out during the time. So we're looking, they're able and ready when we have kids ready for them. That's conclusion of my report.
Questions for Mr. Wilson? All right, we'll move right on to old business, 7.1 Operational Blueprint for Hybrid Model.
Kind of a broad topic there, and I don't know how much discussion the board wants to get into tonight, but at least I wanted to provide an update on where we are with the metrics, recent events, some changes. But I did ask principals, they are already working on the, on the plans that would, with the intent of bringing students back as quickly as possible, I think we hear that over and over again. So in order to do that, we need to, again, start with, with the metrics. So I prepared this sheet here, there's a couple more on the table, audience members if you'd like. This first one here is something I, it's going to, it's on the website now, if you go to the left of my picture where it says COVID information metrics, this will be updated every week. We were trying to look for a simple way for people to understand what it takes for all of our students to, to have the green light, if you will, to go. And so I know you've heard this before, so I won't bore you with the repeating, but essentially, you see, out of the 10, 11 weeks there, there's only been two weeks where we've had consecutive yeses, and we need three straight weeks of yeses in order for all kids to come back. Okay? Now, the exception to this graph is that K3, and if actually you turn to the, the back of the second page, the one that's in kind of green font, we as a district could have and can bring our K3 students. We are eligible based on those metrics here, we are currently eligible to have K3 here. And the difference essentially is the 10 column can go up to 30, the positivity still has to be positive, five or below, but the state metric is not included in that one. Okay? So even if you look at that, if we had decided to open school on normal, you can see those two red 13s, we still would have been okay because that column is 30, but only for K3. So, and just to remind you and the public, the reason we chose, I chose, we chose not to was for three primary reasons, one that's going to resolve. But the first one was the, the health risks for our elementary staff, over half of them were in the high-risk categories as far as potential exposure risks. The second was 100% of our bus drivers are in the high-risk category, so as far as transporting and so on. So those were significant enough. The third one was cleaning supplies, those are now, we have access to those to, when kids are on campus, we can easily do what we would need to do. So, I think it's a case in, in point, and I know even the, the board was, was respectfully divided on, on that topic, and about having the K3 back. Every time I'm here, these small groups of kids come in, I, I share the joy that Tom shared about, that's what school is, and, and certainly more than noise, but the laughter and the engagement. But over the weekend, we saw what happened just with our neighbors, you know? In a, in a moment's notice, an, an event occurs of some positivity of a student or student's family, and then the health department is involved, and the health department says, "You shall bump up." Well, but then 24 hours, they had to let all their families know, "We're not having school tomorrow until we further investigate our procedure." Now, it's my understanding, they have gone through the process, and they're looking to bring back the majority of their K3 kids, you know, as soon as possible, because I haven't seen today's news, but they were looking to Thursday or early next week. So, with that said, that is recognized as, but again, I'm coming back to the, the fragility of these numbers, I think kind of reinforces maybe being a little bit more prudent, as inconvenient it was for many or most families, especially the K3. I'm hoping that was, was the best decision. As we move now to looking towards November 2nd, we look to the pink metric. And it was mid-August, this one, it was in mid-August when the state board had heard from a lot of eastern Oregon that we're not the metro I-5 areas, and your metrics are intentionally punishing the smaller rural districts. And so at that point, they came up with variants based on the size of the counties. So in this one specifically for counties under 30,000, which the Currys included, this, this is how we can open, whereas the first one is what it would take for us to open everything statewide. The pink one says how we can open Curry County. One, the first check, we can do sections one through three yes. The right-hand check, school, a school has enrollment of 250 or less can open. So right now, the high school is at 110, okay, and Riley Creek is at 233 kids. You don't count the online kids because they're uncommitted. So, in this scenario, we can open with both schools with the caveat of, again, and we're under the 30, which we've proven most of the time to be, coming back to that first check mark, groups of 50, the cohort size of 50. So what does that mean? That means that a student in their school day can have contact with no more than 50 I'll let that think for a second. You might be thinking of the variations of what that might look like. So, if the high school is the example, that's half the high school, more or less, and again, we don't anticipate the O D P police will be down here for at 52 or 53. But the idea that if 50 students, freshmen, sophomores came to school for a whole day, that's a group of 50. And even if we went to the extent of the whole high school attending, but if maybe 50 of them started at 8 o'clock, and 50, the other group, the juniors and seniors started at 8:30, and their passing periods were different, their lunch was different, then, in that sense, the whole high school could come to school at the same time. The elementary, the way Tom, some of his design has been, is considering at a grade level, a cohort. So if you go back again to our green sheet and you look at grade levels, right now, they're all in the high, mid to high 20s. But if we anticipate some of those online people coming back, those groups are going to go into the 30s. So it's, so you can already appreciate the challenge of trying to, having a grade level be its own cohort might be too many. That would be potential, excuse me, eight different cohorts having to be, not have contact with each other. However, if you had half the students attend at a time, which is Tom's current model, projection, is have a half that 133 kids come in the morning and half come in the afternoon, then you've got groups in that elementary, in the K2 hallway where we have 70 kids, you now have 35. And that's under the 50, and then that cohort of kids would have recess together, have lunch together, use the same bathroom, that's kind of what the cohorting looks like in the day. Instead of kids going to the library for a, for their library lesson, the library's going to come to them. You know, instead of P E, of course, it's all weather-related, instead of P D being in the gym, maybe it's outside where again, there's the mask break and all of that that goes along. So I don't want to get too deep into the planning, other, unless you had comments or thoughts that you wanted to share with the principals about ideas you've had, things you've heard from the community, how you think an A B, meaning kind of like a Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, all-day model versus an A M, P M model at the elementary. So that's kind of the thought of the discussion, if you want to have that tonight. We're going to come back in October and have a model ready, because two weeks after that is November 2nd. So, yes, questions?
My only question right now, I mean, I, this is pretty complicated, but really, my only question still comes back to, if we wait until October to have this discussion, I just want to make sure that 100% safety and cleaning materials are there, because no matter what option we go with, or, well, that, that needs to be in place. So I just, I just want to be clear that whichever arrangement you put together, that is in place to be handled.
Yes. Yeah, so we have, we have the equipment handy, I could get it here tomorrow.
And so, you know, even if you were, say, at Riley Creek, having all of these different cohorts passing through at different times in the bathroom, you've got staffing in place to make sure... at different times in the bathroom, you've got staffing in place to make sure that that can be taken care of in between.
Absolutely.
If some of the strictly online students roll back to, you know, choose to come back to the building, and we, you know, enough of them do it to push us over the 250 number, does that mess us up from operating under these metrics?
Sure, I asked that question of ODE early on, and again, they kind of looked at each other. If it's around the 260, they're not going to
They're not, if it's 251, they're not going to say, sorry.
If they say it's 300, then yeah, that would be, then we no longer meet the criteria. High school could, but because they're going to be under the 240. So I don't know, again, if the board is interested in having more discussion, or do you, because Jeremy's point is in the sense of, you know, we're going to have, we, the commitment I made to the teaching staff is that we would try to, and the community would be, at least three weeks prior, we would make an announcement based on, based on the metrics and our best projection. Of course, we could come here on October 21st, and the metrics all be post-Labor Day and whatever impacts. We already know next week's going to be bad in Curry County.
Right.
So we'll probably come back in October with two plans. The continuation of CBL or a recommended hybrid of some sort. Do gentlemen want to ask any, or add to that, or?
No, to answer Jeremy's question, that's one thing, you know, the maintenance staff, I have one guy a day and one guy late after night, so we're going to have to definitely look at that, because if we do come back, half the kids in the morning, half the kids in the afternoon, there's three student bathrooms and then four or five staff bathrooms. So basically, my lunch janitor guy is going to be doing bathrooms all day long, and then we don't have it, but we're looking at lunches will probably be in, breakfast and lunch will be bagged and served in the room to each kid. So that's kind of how we're working on that. You know, I think Tim mentioned, the biggest concern is our bus drivers, you know, the age of our bus drivers. And we're thinking though, if we get enough bus drivers, we just have a longer lunch break, so the teachers get a prep period possibly and a lunch break, which gives the drivers enough time to take the kids. They would eat lunch at school, go home, and then they clean the buses, and then turn around and come back in and pick up kids on the way. And we used to do an AM, PM kindergarten, when we had half-day kindergarten. And so we looked at the numbers with the bus people, and we tried to figure out if AM was in town or AM was out of town, and we kind of looked at the numbers to make that decision. And we probably have to do the same thing, you know, look at where the bodies of the kids are and then figure out which would work best for AM or PM. But I think it's doable. It's going to be keeping kids in masks, you know, we've just been dealing with that for the last three days, and it's difficult, and they kind of think the elbow thing is cool right now, but we'll see how that goes too. But we're working on it. It's just, it seems like every time we make a plan, there's something else comes up that we hadn't thought of, and that's just the nature of this whole mess is that we can't plan for everything. We just do the best we can, so.
Just, Mr. Redsker, do you want to add anything?
No, I think Tom kind of hit the high five for me.
But one more thing, I guess, whether this discussion gets deeper tonight or in October, I guess, I would almost lean towards October, because one of the things that, in addition to seeing the actual metrics up to date, the other thing that I'd be interested to know is what the difference from the teaching perspective is between splitting the day in half and splitting the groups in some other way where they're there for an entire day.
Well, and I can provide a little bit of insight to that at the high school level. Really, it's not going to change the amount of instruction that people are doing, because either way, they're going to be providing some kind of sort of a blended classroom experience where in the morning, if you're doing an AM, PM, in the morning, your classes are doing something online. In the afternoon, they're doing something in person, and it's sort of switching between the two. Or if you do a multiple-day cohort thing, so my original sort of throwing a spitball at it was freshmen and sophomores are Monday and Tuesday, Wednesday's a deep cleaning day, Thursday, Friday are juniors and seniors. Well, those juniors and seniors are not having school two days a week. They're having school five days a week, but three days they're doing something online, two days they're doing something in person. The teaching class load isn't going to change at all, it's just whether you're seeing those kids physically in front of you or on a screen during that time. The seven-period model would still allow for you to have the same number of things. So if you teach second-period junior, senior physics, or, yeah, physics, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday during that second-period time, you're still teaching junior, senior physics. You're just teaching to a camera. Thursday and Friday, you physically have them there, and you're doing things with them that you wouldn't be able to do distance-wise. The morning, afternoon, you'd be talking about an AB day schedule. So you do periods 1 through 4 in the morning, you do periods 1 through 4 in the afternoon. That first group has homework first thing in the morning for the first half of the day, and in the afternoon, they have live instruction. The other group's the other way around. Tuesdays, Thursdays will be the opposing days.
Oh, if I could cut onto that.
Exactly.
The reason we were looking at AM/BE was if we have, the teachers, I kind of pulled a few of them that were around, they want to see the kids every day, and that, I'm talking elementary, you know, they want to see the kids every day. And it also eliminates busing lunches home, food home, because if we do every other day, the other half of the kids have to have lunches and breakfast go home, I believe. So that was an issue for the AB. And I was actually, Tuesday, I was going to go down and observe Brookings and kind of see what was going on there, if they would let me. But then they're shut down. So I'm hoping, when they open up, that maybe next week I can get down there, because that's what they're doing a morning, afternoon, half the kids in the morning. And I'd like to see what they're doing. I know they have a lot more numbers than we do, but I'd like to maybe learn something from seeing what they're doing too.
That is one of the benefits, I guess, of what, you know, our chosen option at this point. We're going to be able to gather some data from other places to see how it's going. Best practices, so to speak. Yeah, I'll stay off my soapbox for the most part. I think everybody here knows what my thoughts are about. I mean, I think the K, well, just for clarification sake, I mean, it sounds like the goal is to have the kids in the building to the fullest extent possible by the next quarter, depending on the metrics and everything going on in the world.
I was just, I'm sorry.
No, no, but go ahead.
I was just going to say, maybe in conclusion, maybe just another piece of data. If you all had the chance to read today's OSBA news, the number-one article was from Crook County. And they have specifically written a letter to ODE saying, "We'd like to use that 30, our schools are bigger than 250." You know, their high school is 800 or something. But our metrics have shown that we can offer 412 just as comfortable as K3 with that.
With the same.
With the same thing. So that might be a little test water to see if ODE will allow, if they allow them, then I think there would be, the door would be open to, and that takes us out of the 250, 50 cohort.
Right.
So more to come in two weeks.
Yeah, no, that's, I'm, you know, we're moving in that direction. There's a lot of things outside of our control, so I mean, that's understood. As long, and I, you know, echo Jeremy's sentiments, as long as we have everything, cleaning supplies, PPE, everything to keep our staff and all employees, we can do it safely, you know, and the K3 really, that one is almost a no-brainer for me. If we can do it, I mean, because those kids, no.
So yeah, that might be, that might be another variation. Maybe K3 comes back on November 2nd. And the others have to be delayed two weeks or a month or?
Right, depending on.
Because the metrics allow us to do that.
Yeah.
From my perspective, it's most, we definitely want to get those young kids back in the school. That's, we should do that.
Zoom classes for kindergarteners.
Well, and I guess, thank you for the clarification on how you guys as principals see those options playing out, because I think that you're going to be putting a lot of stuff together between now and October as far as options go, and if it helps the district get the lunches distributed, and it helps the teachers to be able to have contact with the kids every day, I would say, put your energies into coming up with a plan that works according to that model.
And I think that's one of the challenges of what we're doing right now. Over the course of the summer, I wrote eight different schedules with five different models. And finally, there was one that worked. So we're going to have a lot of time invested into doing these things and making sure that we can do it right. That's, it was getting dropped into the deep end of administration. This is only my third year as an administrator, and so all of a sudden, it was like, oh, oh, okay, let's completely restructure a school from the ground up. But at the same time, it's one of those things that we're going to do it because it needs to be done, and we're going to do it right.
That's what I'm going to calendar to see whether.
As far as child nutrition, they're planning on continuing running the summer food service program. I believe they extended it through December. So we will end up having to make some adjustments in that, if like, if one of these options comes, because we will still be needing to provide meals to all people, or all kids in our area, ages 1 to 18. So we will probably end up doing more of a, probably a grab-and-go type of an option for those people, because we will probably no longer have the busing available to deliver anymore. So we may have to look at adjusting that program as well accordingly.
Can I ask a question about that? If it goes through November, or December, like you said, does that mean if we bring students in to school, say, the K3, that they will get free meals?
Yes.
Until, so they'll still qualify for that even though?
Those rules that we're under now won't change. It'll just be the delivery method that would change.
Got it. Thank you.
Can you clarify, we were talking about the supplies and that we have adequate supplies, but do we have adequate supplies for some longevity, like a surplus?
Yes, yes.
Because it's sometimes hard to get those supplies if we have a big run on them. Again, I was just curious on that.
Yeah, we have been very patient with our regular custodial supply firm. However, it's proven to, that their supply is limited. However, we do have a local company that has its significant inventory and reached out to us and can have things within 48 hours. So I have no concerns with the supply for cleaning supplies.
Anybody else? Thoughts, comments before we move on?
Oh, yeah, briefly, yes.
Can I, briefly? I stayed in contact with Alan from Brookings, and they lost seven bus drivers last week, which is a tremendous amount. Now, that's the one thing that I can hear for, because I still am loving everybody there. But I'm really worried because of the bus drivers that we do have, and their ages and things of that sort. That if something does go down, I just don't know how you're going to get these kids to school. Right, that's a consideration. And in order to make their AM, PM schedule work, they hired nine additional drivers. So this is the first I've heard now of seven. Yeah, he just spoke with me this weekend. We were talking about it and how a lot of the drivers with all this happening, that, you know, the outcome of the COVID, and then also worrying about not being employed for certain times and not being able to, if they went to something else. And it's so hard to get bus drivers in the first place. I always, wherever I go in another state, I always talk to someone that's there and talk to them. They're having the same problems too.
It's also my understanding that there, even if we had people willing to become a bus driver, that there is no training available right now.
Right, that's the other thing.
So.
Catch 22. I'll do it. I didn't want to be a bear, I don't have enough to do.
You said that, and it's on him.
No, no, I had to ask. It was an illusion. Yeah, never mind. Okay. All right, if no board member questions or comments at this point, we'll move on. New business, 8.1, first reading of proposed policies.
So these essentially are partner policies provided by OSBA for your consideration around communicable diseases. There's a staff version and a student version. They're essentially the same. But, and then this is a revision of a policy that you already have on the books from 2015. It's been revised with emphasis on the COVID, addition of COVID primarily. So some minor language changes. The language you have in front of you, if you want to provide any guidance, is the recommended. The highlighted is the new language, and then the struck-out language would be replaced by the highlighted. The gray is the policy-specific, and then the yellow is the administrative rules that go with it.
Is there any difference in the way staff policy in this regard would work in a distance-learning environment versus in-person?
That's a good question, because they really don't reference distance learning at all, do they, in the policy? Unless it gets into the, looking at the ARs.
So I guess, for example, if it happened today, if the teacher contracted COVID, but they were able to actually teach in a virtual way, would they be allowed to work from home?
Right, so those scenarios are in our current ODE guidance, and there's a booklet of scenarios just like that. So, yes. Yeah, and we've actually had that discussion administratively this week, related in the sense that there might be those days that maybe you have a slight headache or tummy ache, and so you're feeling a little bit rough, but now that you can teach virtually, can I just stay home, work through the headache, and work? And after a bunch of discussion, we said, no, if you're sick, you should not be working. And so I think it's kind of along the same line. We don't want to make the convenience of, that's the right word, the opportunity to work from off-campus to be a reason, oh, it's foggy today, I don't want to drive, so I'm going to teach from home type of thing. I think related, if we get into the COVID-specific, then those are our protocols about, you know, you're tested, and then you're quarantining for so many days, and then there are different leads. Whether you can, in your quarantine, still teach, then it's not counted as a sick day. But if it is, then there's sick leave, there's specific COVID leave that's an expansion of the FEDLA/OFLA leave. So, you know, it's not going to, that doesn't happen, but it occurred here locally, I mean globally. So, so the only thing I saw related to that, Jeremy, was if a student or a staff member is deemed by the health administration that they can't be at school, then because of exposure, then they shall stay home.
All right, anybody has any more comments left over, we'll move on. Check them off the list next month. 8.2, proclamation declaring October as bullying prevention month. Anybody feel like reading tonight?
All right, thanks for volunteering. Whereas bullying is physical, verbal, sexual, or emotional intimidation or harm intentionally directed at a person or a group of people and occurs in neighborhoods, playgrounds, schools, on the job, and through technology. And whereas research indicates that bullying is the most common form of violence annually affecting thousands of Oregon children. affecting thousands of Oregon children and adolescents. And whereas fifteen, fifty-six percent of Curry County's sixth and eighth graders and forty-eight percent of eleventh graders felt harassed during the 30 days before the Oregon Student Wellness Survey 2018, and over eighty percent of sixth and eighth graders and sixty-nine percent eleventh graders heard other students bully another student and heard others spread mean rumors well above the Oregon average. And whereas targets of bullying are more likely to acquire physical, emotional, and learning problems, and whereas children who bully are at greater risk of engaging in more serious violent behaviors, while children who witness bullying often feel less secure, more fearful, and intimidated. Now, therefore, the Central Curry School District Number One Board of Directors hereby proclaims the month of October 2020 as Bullying Prevention Month. Be it further resolved that all schools, students, parents, recreational programs, religious institutions, and community organizations be encouraged to engage in a variety of awareness and prevention activities designed to make our community safer for all children and Entertain a motion to approve that. Do we have any? Yes. Anyone?
I move to proclaim October as Bullying Prevention Month. I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? So proclaim. Eight point three, leave of absence request.
You see in the yellow paper, there are requests of a privately-creed teacher to take the leave of absence for this school year is allowed in the bargaining agreement with the licensed staff that they can request a year's leave of absence upon board approval and administration recommendation. In this case, the family wishes they just, because of COVID, they wanted to stay home with their children and so on. So this action comes with the recommendation of the principal and me to honor this request. They would be able to return next year without any loss of experience or placement.
Questions on that one? I move to accept the leave of absence request.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Absence approved. Eight point four, curriculum adoption.
This is a little bit backwards. I apologize for that, but I look back at the timing. We last met about August the 19th or 20th, which was at the time we were in contract negotiations with Edgenuity to have a curriculum, an online curriculum available for our students. And so if we'd had the right timing, this would have been something we would present to you back in June or July, doing research on all the available different companies and so on. And rather, in this case, it came back to, we found the one that was most available. So I apologize for that. But this is just a, kind of a handout of the Edgenuity website. It is a K-12 comprehensive online curriculum, primarily for the past four years. The high school has used it as its credit retrieval and also for electives of courses that we don't offer here and advanced placement. The option came open certainly, we needed an option for our K-8 students, and so we co-tailed with Brookings Harbor for the K-5 license, and then for this year only purchased a sixth grade, sorry, grade six through 12 middle high school license to accommodate the online requests. This is a win-year contract. We are using funds that were made available through our emergency grants, and Edgenuity is an approved program by the state of Oregon, meets all the requirements for Oregon curriculum and national course names. So I'm asking for your post-approval of something we've already started.
All right. Any questions on that one?
I just wanted to share my personal opinion that it works well, and I, it is smooth, and you can tell what to do next, and I like the way that it works.
Would you mind, testify is the wrong word, but would you mind sharing maybe a little bit more from your perspective as a parent and from your daughter's perspective?
Yeah, my daughter's in fourth grade, and so, and she's doing online only.
Okay.
And so she's working through it on her own, and it's working well. She, it's intuitive, and she can figure out where to go, and she can message her teacher that's the, well, easily. She's done it quite a few times without even knowing, so it's working well.
Okay, well, that is, kind of, what we're hoping to hear. We do have Ms. Van Hall is our privately-creed liaison for K-5, and we have about fifty, fifty kids in that program right now. So, good to hear.
Someone need a motion?
Yeah. I'll take a motion.
All right. I move to adopt the Edgenuity Online Learning Curriculum. What's up? Yes, a second. Did you have a comment?
Nope.
Or you were going to say, okay, very good. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Curriculum adopted. Curriculum. All right. Eight point five, student performance, student superintendent performance goals and board agreement in the very light purple.
Yes. So the board superintendent operating agreement was a repeat from last year. You might recall, I worked with Renee. We mutually agreed on these set of expectations, and I understand Jeremy may have a suggestion on some changing this. I'm not sure if that's still...
Uh, which one are we, are we talking about the goals or the operating agreement? I do have a proposed change to the operating agreement. If you want me to...
Yeah, go ahead, Jeremy.
Well, I'm not 100% sure on what the right language for this is, but on, at the end of the operating agreement, 2020, 21, Expectations of the Board.
Back page.
Back page. Number two, I understand why that's important. I also, which is respect for the confidentiality requirement of board meeting executive sessions. I also know that it's state law, and we've sworn it up, the full state law. So it feels a little redundant, and I guess what I talked to Superintendent Wilson about is changing it to something that reinforces what the intent is behind it, which is to remind us that executive sessions are confidential. But basically says diligence. My proposal is that number two would be diligence in following state laws for public meetings and confidentiality, or something to that effect, which is actually maybe even more inclusive and broader than what the original statement is. I don't know if that even really does anything, but it just felt to me like signing an agreement that's kind of states what we've already sworn to do. Seemed weird, but...
Yeah, I'm absolutely in favor of revising number two to read just exactly that.
So could you read it again for us, so...
And I've got it. I'm going to skip this to, I wrote this on the paper copy, but it, what I wrote was, number two, diligence in following state laws for public meetings and confidentiality. And I'm okay if that gets tweaked too, but...
Diligence in following state laws in public meetings.
And confidentiality.
I have no problems with that.
Okay. Yeah, no, that, yeah, we talked about it. I, I'm fully in favor. Any other questions or possible amendments to either of these? Thoughts?
That sounds good to me, and I have no amendment.
Sounds good.
May I address one of my goals for a moment as well? Yeah, I guess it was more of a clarification, and this is in goal number one. To assist the school board in meeting is community engagement and long-range planning goals. The superintendent will continue to create opportunities to facilitate discussions with community forums, including outreach to community members who currently do not have students in the school. So the intent of that was a big, a large majority of our community, our voters, don't have students in school or are retirees, and so to intentionally reach out to them as you consider going out for some type of a bond in a couple of years. Earlier tonight, we talked about that group of 30 who are in homeschool and in charter, and so potentially another thing to add to this would be groups, families that are not currently engaged in public school, at least to have an informed, intentional study on their reasoning for homeschool. And so I like to add that, I'll add that language in there, but I wanted to make sure that the intent originally was around the bond, but we can broaden it to include that population.
Absolutely. So like one, you, one C, or you just...
Sure.
Add one.
I'll, I think one C.
Okay. And you go?
I'll, yeah, I'll, we're expecting, but essentially around reaching out to families currently not served by the public school system.
Okay. Should we wait to adopt the bill here?
I'll leave that to you if you're getting...
I mean, yeah.
The second goal was in relation to the impacts of the COVID pandemic on school operations and financial stability. That idea is we're going to revise our continuous improvement plan, and then we really need, if we get to a certain part of the year where the state finance, the state school fund, I mean, we got good news today, but that changes what other models, you know, would we have to have a reduction in force? What other ways can we use our current staff in different ways? So that was kind of the intent there, then to complete our emergency operations plan as it relates to other indexes. And then finally, one of the things you're going to see at the October board meetings, you remember our annual, my report to the board and the committee about the Division 22 standards that we have done, blah, 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 blah. Well, they've moved that up to October now, so you're going to see it next month, but they've also shortened them. But a significant part of our deficits in the district has been around adopting curriculum and then purchasing curriculum. So what I would have hoped to have, this goal is around doing an inventory, pardon the bad word, a study of what the last time we did adoptions, what did we adopt, and then what is the plan to make those corrections? Because that's actually one of the corrections for the 18, 19 school year I had to attest to, that we would make some changes. So that's going to align with the study as well.
All right. Anything else?
No, that's all.
All right. No, we'll go ahead. Yeah. We're going to check this one off. I move to approve the superintendent performance goals and board agreement as amended with the item one C to be determined surrounding...
Reach out to families not currently enrolled in the public school system for input. Something on that.
Well, the goal would be on that one, the end goal is to hopefully enhance enrollment, right?
Correct. Which, again, relates around the long-range planning. Because if we have more people, more students enrolled, then we can maintain our staff or increase staff.
I'll second that.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Approved.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number nine, citizen input on agenda items. One of the two minutes per person. Hi, Tina.
Hi, Andy. I just want to stand up so I can pick this up.
Take your phone.
I have, I just wanted to input on number seven, and more specifically Jeremy's discussion when that was brought up, on the ability and the supplies for disinfecting the school. As a staff member and as a parent of somebody over here, I have great concern about that. We currently have an eight-hour janitor, like Mr. Denny talked about, and then we have six-hour janitor. I don't know if that's considered part-time, a little more than part-time. I'd just like you to keep in mind that we just lost a highly qualified teacher, fifth grade, Ms. Watson, that is not being replaced. We also just had a qualified teacher take a year leave out. So I would like to propose, if we can increase that six-hour janitor to eight, I know that it involves a lot more, hers, health insurance, that there's a lot more to consider about it. But maybe if it's only for this year, I just don't have a lot of faith in us being able to maintain the level of disinfection that we need in order to keep our students in school. And both of our janitors are great. They're very highly motivated, they're very good at their jobs, but they're limited by the amount of time that they have to complete these things. Thanks.
And that's actually one of the things I was, in my board member report, are there, is there anything in the pipeline? Let me get it up, Carl, before I forget it. Anything in the pipeline regarding funds surrounding, you know, cleaning and disinfecting, I mean, at the federal level or state level? I would think that, I, you know...
So we did receive some funding on that already. That was the ESR, the...
Right.
Elementary, secondary schools, emergency resources. Yes.
Okay.
So, but actually, to reaffirm Tina's suggestion, Crystal, I, Crystal brought that up back in, actually in July, that we should evaluate what our, especially once we return students to our buildings being full, that it would be, behoove us to look at what a temporary addition to our staff would look like. And that's going to, and we really won't know what that looks like until we, we can certainly plan for what that would look like.
Yeah, there's no point.
But that idea, we recognize that this is the expectation for cleanliness and constant, you're, rather than doing bathrooms once a day, you're doing them eight times a day, and that, that's not an exaggeration. So we, that's a great idea that we've already discussed, and now we, you know, we'll look at the, where we can in a budget, and whether it's adding two additional hours to a six-hour person, or adding temporary staff at four hours a day, all they do is do bathrooms all day. I mean, that definitely...
Yeah, we'll, we'll see what we're allowed to do and, you know, everything from now on.
Yeah. But definitely that is a plan that was already in the works. Good night. Thank you.
Mr. King? You may have noticed that I left the room, and I've only come back periodically to be adjusted camera. The growing scientific evidence is that once someone speaks... The growing scientific evidence is that once someone speaks, in addition to large droplets, they emit a cloud of smaller aerosol droplets that remain suspended in the atmosphere for an extended period of time. I happen to know, you know, one of your people, when I asked, put his mask back on when he headed off, but I know Gordon goes to the commissioners' meetings all the time where most, many people don't wear masks. And he's there speaking an extended period of time. And I don't know whether, you know, this morning, he was exposed to one of those people at the board of commissioners' meeting and they stood there and talked. So, I enjoy filming your meetings, but if you're gonna have people speak without masks, I'm not gonna be here. I just won't. And you need to think, you know, I read newspapers online from major cities back east that have school buildings about as old as ours. And one of their main concerns of bringing students into school is ventilation. And I think when you think about putting students in the elementary school or in the high school, you need to take into account whether you can properly ventilate those rooms that those students are gonna be in. I think that's a real consideration and I assume that by October, late October, we're gonna know more about the spread through the aerosols. And my other comment is, yes, we only have 23,000 permanent residents that count, but I drive 25 miles once a week on neighborhood watch. And I'll tell you, along the ocean and up the hills, every Airbnb is full every weekend, most of the time during the week, most of them are from out of state, and it turns over every week. So, I think in considering what we ought to look for, and we don't count those people if they test positive here. You know, the county refuses to tell us who tests as positive and leaves. So, I would suggest that when you make, use that matrix, you need to think maybe that we're bigger than 23,000 and maybe we hit that 30, really or effectively that 30,000 level. And that that is the matrix you need to look at. And thank you.
All right. Anybody else? We'll move on to board member reports. Start on this side and that one. Nancy?
Well, I always am thanking people, but I think it's important to thank the staff and to thank the principals, the superintendent and Tina, all the support people that keep the school going with their ideas and also their hard work. It takes a lot in a normal year, and this is quite far from normal. So, it is appreciated. I liked hearing about all the people helping each other and that's really a bonus to have the teamwork and people coming up with ideas. So, just grateful for all that everybody's doing. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy.
I'm basically gonna echo that. I just wanna thank everybody who is pouring their heart and soul into making this work. I know that people are just really going above and beyond, so, thank you.
Same for me. Thank, yeah, big, big thanks to everybody. It is what it is. And we'll, we'll get through it one way or another, move on. And I don't, I had something I was gonna put out there, but it's gone now, so. Let's move on to Mr. McNair.
I say thank you as well. Keep it short.
Jeremy?
Thank you. And specifically, a couple people who may have been mentioned, but I wanna just call it one more time. Dan Springer, done a lot of work. Been, been trying to like, you know, deal with old humps of plastic that don't work anymore to get them working. And so, I, I, I see correspondence as a member of the tech committee for the district and there's been a lot of hoops there. So, I just wanna thank Dan and all the teachers, of course, and all the staff and administration and Southwestern Children's Foundation for additional devices. And I guess to add on to my thanks, what I've observed over the last month, looking at what's the people I'm in contact with through the library and through the tech committee as a school board member, what comes to me is that we need devices. We need devices yesterday. And so, as a, as a person who's been on the tech committee for a long time, I think we have this, one of the principals mentioned this, this idea of being one-to-one was sort of like, yeah, we'll get there at some point, we need to be there. So, I just wanna say that. And, and in order to be effective at one-to-one, we need more bandwidth. So, I'm just putting that out there. The district needs a lot more bandwidth. There's been issues with things timing out in the middle of instruction and so, I'd like to put that out to the administration that if we can make that work, I don't, I, there's a lot of implications of that, but I'd like that to be considered. And I think that's it. But really, it is an overwhelming sense of what I've seen over the last month of people just really, really working hard to get things done. So, thank you.
Can we just run the cable from the library to the school? I shouldn't say stuff like that. I remember what I was gonna say. And I'm the chair, so you get to hear it. No, one way again. No. We, you know, I had hard, we all had hard burn to some level or another about, you know, the strictly online format and the consequences. And I, I'm trying to find silver linings wherever they may be. And one of them is that we've, the only metaphor I can think of is ripping the Band-Aid off. We've, we've gone to the full online format, you know, four and a half weeks from now, we're gonna be, you know, we're gonna know what it is, we're gonna know how to do it, we're gonna know a lot of things we didn't know four weeks ago. So, if we get into a situation where we're having the kids in the building and something like what happens in Brookings and we're forced back into the online format, we're going to be significantly more prepared than we were. So, I'm, I'm grateful for that and at least we've, we've laid the groundwork in advance and that's all we can do. That is it. I'm done talking. Next board meeting, October 21st, 2026 PM. And the OSBA Annual Convention is November 14th, 2020, in the virtual format.
So, again, if any of you are interested, please just drop me an email. It's a, it's just a slight fee, but like the one in the summer. It's a one-day event and the board will certainly pick up your feeds for that. Related, and I've seen the OSBA reminded me, providing you as board, we still have one more session as a part of our promised scholarship, including session with Renee Sussler. If you're interested, I have her calendar for October, or if you wanted to wait to, we'll go into November. What are your thoughts?
How much?
It's, it would be like a two-hour evening meeting.
If you don't have a preference.
What's her calendar in October?
Would people like to get their calendars out?
I will be, I will be gone the week before.
So, she says I'm available, I open most Octobers in the evenings except nine, 15, and 19.
Yeah, I'm gonna be in limited, it's all covered from the ninth through the 16th, but everything else is.
Would we like to be here?
Mm-hmm.
Is that when you're gonna be out of the area?
Yeah.
So, let's not do that time.
Yeah.
This would be, we would all straight back to, break back to district leadership team, the teachers to be a part of that last session. So, your next board meeting's on the 21st. And so, do you wanna look at something the week of the second or after the board meeting, the last week of October?
Oh, like November 2nd? Or October 2nd?
I see October 2nd, it's a Friday, so I guess it'd be the week of the 5th.
5th through the, yeah, 5th, 6th, 7th, 8th, 9th, 10th. No, 5th, 6th, and 7th.
I have nothing planned, so.
What time would that be?
It would be like a 5:30 to 7:30.
Right there and over.
Should I look, look at the week after the 5th through the 8th?
Yeah.
Thank you. I'll get with the page tomorrow then and get a timeline.
Thank you.